So many phones.
Yeah.
If it has a small air.
Yeah. So it sounded like very elation to me, didn't, you know.
Well, I guess I wasn't rude to him.
Yeah. But clarified, yeah. Well, and I think most of the time that's just what they want to hear.
Right.
Their first.
Right, absolutely.
All right, at six thirty, we'll call the Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting for the city mayor order. If we can start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I do not.
We'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. We'll open up for public comments if there's anyone who'd like to discuss anything not on the agenda. Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Just have one question since Chief showed up, or arrived, I should say. On the turnout gear, I know the last ones we bought, it was, and I don't know if it was a separate price or this, but part of the arrangement was yearly, we would send them in and get them washed. Are we doing that same thing? Have you been doing that? Is that baked into this? Is there a need for that? Or is that, is that included at all?
When we looked at the, or when we priced them out last time, that was an option to have, you know, kind of a yearly contract type of thing in there that was an option. At the time, we didn't do that option, and this doesn't do it as well.
Okay, okay, good. Perfect, thank you. Thanks, Andy. Any other questions? All right, with that, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carries four zero. Now with that, Maggie, we'll go to seven eight one, twenty twenty-two street projects.
All right, I will start it off, and then I will let Dave provide any, our city engineer, provide any additional comments. So in January, the city council approved having the city engineer put together the specifications and scope of the project that would be used to send the project out for bid, and so today's meeting is to, for the engineer to provide final scope of the project, and then for council to consider putting, moving forward with the bidding process. So I'll let Dave do a little bit more information if you would like.
Yeah, I guess to just really follow up to what we've already discussed, the project area is what we've talked about before. If you recall, kind of through two thousand twenty-one, we worked on our project management plan, scaled this year's project down with the belief that next year we'd have a larger project, so we're looking at a portion of River Ben Trail, Big Oak Lane, Deer Woods Court, and West Ridge Road, along with the cul-de-sacs there. So if you look at this map here, the red area is in Coldwater, it essentially equates to the original Coldwater Crossing Third Edition, and then West Ridge Road, West Ridge Circle, and Rustic Road there. The estimated cost of the project is a little over two hundred thousand. Right now, we're estimating two hundred fifteen thousand, and so we're at a point where requesting authorization to advertise the project and get bids. Be happy to answer questions.
Maggie, how does that two hundred fifteen fit in with what we were?
Um.
Or what we thought was the right amount for this project?
Yeah, so this project, when we initially talked about it at a public works meeting, we were shooting for around two hundred thousand. But I think since that meeting, we did add a little bit more, just some minor additions to it. And so it did bring the price up a little bit, but we're hoping that with the bidding process, it'll come in where we wanted it to. If it does go to that two hundred fifteen thousand mark, we should be fine too. We, we are going to be funding it out of the street capital fund, and we do have enough money in there.
And we have updated the cost just based on current, the current market, blacktop prices have been going up, and so this accounts for some increased costs from a material standpoint.
I think that's pretty locked in with the price accrued and how, and where that's been going, and.
Best information we have, I would say, yeah.
Yep, all right. Any other questions, free their city engineer or administrator?
I guess the last thing I'd add is, you know, if for whatever reason the prices came in significantly different than what we've been estimating or feel we could budget for, probably the logical thing would just be look at the, look at the project limits and see if there's something that we can.
Yes, that's once we get the bids, yeah.
Yeah, but right now, we feel comfortable with the information we have.
All right, no other questions, and I'll look for a motion to authorize Bolton and Mank to advertise the project for a bid opening on April fifth.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Excuse me, with that, Maggie, we can move to seven, B one Zion Lutheran Church and School Expansion Council.
All right, Mayor Dodge and council, you are being asked to review a concept plan for Zion Lutheran Church and School for a proposed expansion. You are then being asked to provide feedback. The reason this initial concept is coming to the city council is because the expansion would include selling of city parkland. I'm just gonna bring up the picture. So the properties that we're talking about include Zion Lutheran's properties located here on the map at two oh nine Blue Jay Avenue. This is just south of city mayor city hall. It's also two oh nine Second Street Northwest. This is the property that Zion owns currently with the house on it. And four one three Blue Jay Avenue, this is city hall and Old Schoolhouse Park. So within the planner's report, there's a lot of detailed information as far as future land use, zoning setback requirements, et cetera, that if this concept did move forward, they would have to, that would have to be considered in more detail. He does explain the requirements in there and what the stat, like the guidelines, and we've talked with Zion Lutheran about those requirements that they would have to meet. And so at this meeting, we're focusing more so on the general concept, and if this concept is one that we would like to allow them to move forward with. So additional review will be done if it goes back or gets accepted to move forward. It will go through staff review, the planning commission, and the city council again at other meetings, and there will also be public hearings involved in that process. So with that, I'll begin with the background of the project concept. I do have representatives of Zion Lutheran here today, Dave Wasser and the architect Lauren Morschen. So they are here to answer any questions as well. So they are asking the city mayor to consider selling part of the city property that's located south of city hall. It is currently a ball field for Old Schoolhouse Park. The church would take a phased approach in the construction of a gym, and I'll do it here. Gym, more classrooms, and a new church. It will also include additional parking, a bus turn, and a bus turnaround. So to be able to do this concept, again, the city would have to be willing to sell parkland. As a result, it was brought to the planning commission and the park commission, and now the city council for review. And the planning commission and park commission both reviewed it and discussed the proposed concept plan at their March meetings. There was an overall consensus that they would not be opposed to selling parkland. The park commission did mention that they would want to find a way to replace the park land elsewhere if that parkland did go away. One of the ideas was Zion Lutheran owns some land off of County Road thirty, that's to the southeast of town. One idea was to do some land swap and potentially use the land out there for parkland, just, just an idea that came up. Otherwise, after, again, we do have the representatives from the school, but that's kind of the general idea of this concept. And so Zion is kind of wanting to have feedback, get some feedback on this concept from the city council, and if the city council, what their comfort level is moving forward with selling parkland in order for them to carry out their concept plan. So with that, again, we do have representatives here to answer any questions. I'm here to answer any additional questions as well.
And I'm sorry, what was the feel from the park board? What were their thoughts?
Um, they, they're, they were, the idea to have shared parking was a, because that, the ball field essentially would be turned into a shared parking area between the, the school and church and the city. There was discussion on how the, how it would be maintained, and who would maintain it, and that. That would be something that would need to be discussed, but they did like the idea of being able to, just with increased events. They, the park commission feels that when they build the new pavilion and a potential splash pad, that more parking will be needed. That's something that the park commission has talked about in the past, how they would increase parking. I think the main concern for the park commission was get, reducing the park space and wanting to find a solution as to increasing parkland somewhere else if that got removed.
I just wanted to make sure they were on board.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, just for the fact of, it seemed a month ago when we met, they were, we talked about removing that ball field, and they were like, no way that thing gets used all the time, and now all of a sudden, no problem, let's get rid of it. It seems odd to me. That's why I wanted to make sure they were aligned, but.
I think there is.
Get mixed messages sometimes.
Yeah, I think with that discussion, when they were reviewing it, they were, because I think they wanted, there was a discussion on if the splash pad would go there, but then the more they talked about it, they realized that that park, that field does get used quite a bit, and so that is a concern of the park commission. If that did get sold, they would want to make sure somehow that park got, that space got replaced somewhere else, but.
Thank you.
My thing, just on the shared parking part, is can, is there like, would it be times that they couldn't use the parking lot? Or can anybody use that parking lot at any time? I know during the school day, you know, like if we have a splash pad, it's most people are gonna use it in the summer, so the school necessarily isn't gonna be in session in the summer, but I just don't want there to be like, oh, well, there's an event at, you know, at city hall, people aren't gonna know, well, you can't park from here to here at these times. Is that a concern, or it doesn't matter? I don't know.
One thing that the, the planning commission came up with, their, one idea was extending, what is it, Fourth Street? In to the parking lot to kind of have like a road division, and then there would be like medians that would, just to kind of have a separation between them. That was just an idea of the planning commission to kind of have a visual separation of both the parking lots.
So there's, there'll be shared outside of school hours? During school hours, they will not, is that, is that?
Well.
And if you don't mind, could you put the record for?
I'm Dave Wasser, by the way, a member of Zion, lived in mayor for a while now, so. I guess this was just an idea we've come up with. We don't have any, like, stipulations on how it should be divided. It was just something that was kind of brought up, like, because we've noticed the issues at events at the community center. You know, the one driveway, one in, one out, and we were thinking it could be manageable to somehow have it used both ways. Obviously, Sunday mornings. I know you're talking about school hours.
I guess the intent with the additional classroom to the school would be over here more. This, and this is just very vague too, it's not necessarily the exact design we're going with. This is just to say this would be here. So our school would be more over here, and the school parking here, and then along the street as well, and then this bus drop off is the other important thing, and that would actually be reduced in size too.
So we really don't have a approved master plan as of yet. What we're really looking for is, would you be willing to sell that acreage? If so, we could come up with some designs. The shared parking, we just thought would be a perk that both the city and the, and the church could take advantage of. However, we negotiated something definitely prior to building anything.
Maggie, could you go up one slide, please? And where on there is, where's the property line now? Is it right up against the school, or?
It roughly is.
It's that line, right, yeah.
It is the line?
Yep.
I believe it's come home late.
I think we were told a hundred and twenty-six feet to the property line, like, which would be the left field.
How much is that an acre?
I think one point one five acres is what we came up with.
And one thing I want to make council aware of too, we do have a wellhouse there next to our park.
Right.
So they, the school is aware that we have a water line going through that land, so there, that's something that needs to, we would need to address as well. If the parking lot was, I don't know, Dave would know more than me if we'd have any easement or how we would navigate that, but I, I guess, it's not ideal to build over it, but there, there are ways to, to work through that, I guess.
From what I understand, you could build a parking lot over that, correct? Because it could be dug up and replaced. It's not ideal, but, yeah. We would be building it with knowing the fact that it could be dug up, and it'd be our cost to replace it. Anyways, and then we have the twenty acres, obviously, north, I should say, east of town, southeast of town, off of County Road thirty, so there is twenty acres there. We would be willing to do some kind of land swap, whether it would be, we took a evaluation of the price of the property and worked that in. I know the Vinkermeyer Farm at some point was looking to be developed, hopefully, was a goal. Options that we were told would be a, be a great spot for a city park. Maybe it's a great spot for new city offices. Just an idea. But anyways, you can see where it's at, the Vinkermeyer Farm, and where building possibly would move forward, so.
It just seems that so far in the future.
Right.
Before it could ever get used, I mean. Would there be an option, would you, would, would there be some consideration of maybe trying to work with the developer out in Cold, on the west end of Coldwater Crossing and purchase some property out there as a swap for that? Because I know we could use another, some green space on the far end of Coldwater.
Saying like the twenty acres for a Coldwater?
No, not, not even using that. We, we swap ours for you purchasing something out there. For us.
Yeah, that hasn't been brought up, but that's a good idea. It'd be something worth looking into.
Well, I, I think there are a lot of options.
Do you mind coming up?
There are, yeah. My name's Lauren Morschen with Linear Morschen Architects, and I'm the architect. And I, I think, I was kind of surprised when it actually said expansion concept plan, because it is a concept plan, but we're not set that it's going to be expanded there. You know, initially, it was supposed to go on to this twenty acres, and development just hasn't gotten there yet, and the school is to the point where they need to add on, and they have some hard decisions to make, because if they add on where they're at, they're kind of locked into the site where they're at. And we just need to know what options we have, because if we could get additional land there, there's a potential for building in town. If not, you know, we, we might have to work out some other deal elsewhere. I'm sure land swaps could, will, will need to be worked out, obviously, at some point. But at this point, we just would like to know whether it's even feasible to consider the current site they're at, and whether we'd have the option of getting some additional land there.
Fair enough.
So, yeah, we're not saying this is, you know, that plan is not where we're going.
Perfect, thank you. Yep, thank you. If you don't mind introducing yourself for the record.
Kurt Thierman, I live right on the property, right, where the red line comes, does the ninety go north?
And my question is.
According to what you had, can you put that other slide up?
The concept? This one?
Yeah, okay, the one that chose. I mean, it looks like they took away all playground.
No.
Where's the playground?
Oh, yeah, it does take up.
No, for the school, the school.
For the school.
Oh, oh, the school, the schools, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I thought you meant ours.
And, and just so you know, this is far from being a finished concept.
Okay.
And when, when the school is finished, this portion, if we went to something about this side, would be available for playground. So this part of the school and these houses would be removed. So there would be green.
Yeah, I, I can't, I gotta assume for an elementary school, they're not taking off the playground, it's gonna get replaced somewhere.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, it obvious, it looks like there's no playground.
Yeah.
And my question is, if they put classrooms there, what height are they going to set the building at?
Yeah, this, we don't know.
A long way down, we have no idea.
Because you can't do this addition like they did the last addition, when they built the gymnasium in that part. I live in that land there, and they, eventually, them two, three lots, they took away the back part of the lots, they fluttered them out. Because they booked aisles when they built that.
That's, so for tonight, and I understand what you're saying, and I want to hear, we want to hear you, but for tonight, the, I mean, is this just a concept, and things got to still meet code and the requirements and height? All that stuff's gonna come later.
I just want to make people aware of the situation.
Absolutely, no, and I appreciate that.
Fifty years.
Yep, and we want to hear from you, so.
And I don't think the school's intention is to make their surrounding neighbors upset with the decision they've made, so.
It wasn't the last time either, what had happened.
But, so tonight, it's more, as they said, the discussion is, is it feasible, is that feasible? If city comes back and says, nope, absolutely not, we don't even want to look at it, they'll have to figure out something, you know, they're, they're just trying to get a feel for, for us, but keep posted on these, we want to hear from you. Any other comments, questions?
No, I mean, I think the school's a great asset to the community, and I think that I'm, I would be open to looking into that. I'm a little nervous about getting rid of that ball field and all that green space, but I do know that our parking lot is, is small, and we do need to expand it. So this is a really good, unique concept that could work with only a few times where Sundays, if the, the new church actually moved to that location and using that parking lot on a Sunday.
Yeah.
But the water may.
Go ahead, Dave.
In its current state, that's shared parking lot, I'll just throw out there that, does it matter who owns that parking? If that parking's needed for city hall uses and park uses, and can also be used and shared for school church purposes, does it matter whether or not you retain ownership of it versus providing it to somebody else?
And it might, and that's some of the thoughts I had when Maggie brought up who's gonna maintain it, who's gonna take care of it, and we got to find the owner of it, and who's gonna do what, but.
I just.
No, I appreciate it.
Again, yeah, we have some utilities coming through there. I just throw that out there. If it's truly gonna be parking lot, then maybe, maybe it doesn't, maybe the ownership of it doesn't.
Oh, do you think, one thing, yeah, to talk about is make it public parking, have it owned by the city, but the construction of it is collaborative, or?
I, I just bring it up, but you know, once that property's gone, it's gone.
Right.
And if that, that's okay, then it's okay.
Yeah. I think for me, I kind of echo kind of Nikki's point on it. My first thoughts were, we just got done talking about how valuable that baseball field is, why are we getting rid of it? I, I can't see us doing it, but I think Zion brings a lot to the community too, so I, I mean, I think we got to look at that. So if we can make something work and figure something out, I, I think I'm okay taking the next, next step and having more discussions, for me. Now, again, once we get into, i- if we decide to do it and it works out, and we've swapped land, done whatever we want, and we're gonna move forward, yeah, we want to hear, we want to make sure we get some other things set, and what we're gonna do with that parking lot. I don't like a shared thing. I do want to figure out what we're gonna do. I think there is some advantage to have, definitely twice a year for fish fries, be nice to have a little more parking.
Or a car show.
Well, that's the other thing I'm, will it still work for that with that? I mean, that's the other thing I want to talk about is from the mayor, Rising Community Festival, get their thoughts on it, because now they can't really have a, we're not gonna get all the cars that they used to get in that little spot, no way.
I think you'll get more.
No. I don't, I don't think so, but we'll have to talk to them and get the number of cars, and, and again, Chad, you might be right, if they pull into every spot, sure.
Right.
That may work.
And then you don't have to deal with the mud, the grass.
We're having a couple hundred cars there, and we're parking up, right up to the hill, and all the lines, and then we were going down the hill, you know, we were, so, and using the baseball field. So I do want to reach out to the Mayor Rising Community Festival and get some feedback from them. But otherwise, I think I'm okay taking that next step for discussions, yeah. I think it could benefit the entire community, benefit everyone.
And I guess what, what would we need to look into to get the okay? That, yeah, you know what, we would like to sell this one point one five acres, or come in an agreement, maybe you're looking at the twenty acre swapping, or you brought up Coldwater.
And what I, what I think, we hear from two other council members who haven't, I haven't heard, I mean, what their thoughts are, and I think if we have a, at least a majority, that, then we can start having some other conversations. Then it's, you know, maybe some work sessions and sitting down, and what do we think we want to do? It'll be more of a work session, I believe, than more of an official council meeting. We don't have to, we can't make decisions, but we can start having those discussions. What do you think? What do you think about this? And start working through it. We've done some of this, you know, we worked with some partners, we did some, tried to do some partnering with New Germany and stuff, and it was that same thing. We'll just sit down and kind of start figuring out how it's gonna look, and what we would need, what you guys, and, and if it works, great, and we move to the next step, and if it doesn't at that point, then maybe it doesn't.
Maybe you want to mention to Kurt too, that the classroom section's not necessarily where it's gonna be either. It very well could go on the south side of the old school. Yeah, yeah, we are. And that could remain the park.
We have talked about it.
Because he had discussed that when he brought it to the park board meeting.
That makes more sense.
Even get.
You get down into where the classrooms are, you've got some really bad soil.
Right.
I remember as a kid, all I had was cattails in there.
I mean, if we, if you're like, you know, we'd be up here selling this, and then we just saw that thing, and it's like, I don't know how that really works. We're like, yeah, we can't do anything here.
I don't think anything's gonna stop a parking lot.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot that'll have to go into that, but at least we can start those conversations and then start figuring out what.
I like the concept. I think it'll bring a lot to the community.
Larry, anything to add?
It's a historic baseball field. I'm just saying the baseball field's been around forever, and I just hate to see it go, but I'm not opposed to the, the concept. I'd like to see some more information, more detailed information, really what you guys want to do.
And a better master plan.
Yeah, and I did notice that there was no green space, and you go by when the, when the, we were PE session, I guess, and there's a lot of kids out there in the green space, and I would hate for you guys to lose all of that. and I would hate to, for you guys to lose all of that and try and crowd them in on the corner. You've got cars on both sides versus the one side, I'm sure you'd fence it in, but.
Maybe Maggie, you can get.
And just so we're clear too, like, our main concern right now is the classrooms.
Yeah.
It's like the last five years, they've had to say no to 65 kids. So we're really losing on the on the building, we've got shared classrooms, seventh and eighth together, fifth and sixth, third and fourth, and so on. So we want to do single grade classrooms, now that, so that would be like phase one in our building process, the classrooms, and then once our budget allowed it, then we would move on to probably like the the church aspect of it where, and then the parking lot situation. Jim would be at the very far end if we are able to do it, so.
Maybe you could get more detail and a harder plan and then.
Better visual, okay.
Yeah, but I I think, you know, they don't want to waste money putting a plan together if the city isn't open.
Right. Let's have, let's, we'll have, we'll have a little more, some of those conversations also in parallel to make sure, because, yeah, we don't want you spending money and getting drawings and things like that, that we certainly don't want that, but, at all, but I think we can have more conversation, it seems like we want to have more is what I'm hearing, so.
Yeah, I think you have another work session with.
Some things to work out, yeah.
And have a little bit more of a plan, thinking about different things and then we'll have a better idea, like, yeah, we 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 would sell you that land or however it works.
You know, and some of it may be if we're looking at now and thinking, hey, there's a great advantage to extra parking there, and that's great, but, and then we go through, we sell it, and then as you get into it, oh, it doesn't work, and now everything flip flops and we don't have the parking there now because it then, well, then what? I mean, if that was one of the things we were looking for, so we got to figure some of that stuff out and those details, but I think we can continue to move forward and you work with Maggie and we'll get stuff set up when you need us and and when we want to start having those conversations.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for coming in. Not 100, yeah. Okay. My old eyes, we'll go to 7C1 Fire Department radios, please.
All right, Mayor Dodge and Council, this evening you're being asked to consider approving the purchase of 12 radios for the mayor fire department. The radios are currently 20 years old. A little bit of background, so usually the, these radios have been on our long-term capital plan. We did have them put on our 2021 capital plan, so we we have them, half of them being replaced in this year and half, the other six next year. And so last year, later in the year, we did receive ARPA money. And per that discussion of how we would you potentially use that money, we did transfer or the idea was to use that money to help fund the purchase of radios, so that is on our tentative list. So when we were reviewing our long-term plan, which we're in the process of updating right now for 2022, that's when we usually get updated pricing and make sure that that those timelines are still accurate, that pricing is up to date. And so when we did get the updated pricing, the radios came in similar to la, or the same as last year at $3,265.25. Our initial plan was to use ARPA money in the late summer fall to purchase these radios, however, we did, at a staff level, reassess that because on April 2nd, I mean, April 1st of this year, they're gonna go up $500 to $700 each. And so why we're bringing this to you is, when I'm updating the long-term plan, I'm actually, my, the, to be consistent with kind of our ARPA discussion, I was gonna remove those from the long-term plan and put them into the ARPA. But why I'm bringing it to you today is because we want to have the council consider purchasing them all right now with ARPA money because that would essentially save us $6,000 to $8,000 in the future because the price is going up that so significantly. So as you know, we were allocated 240, about $244,000 in ARPA funds in 2021. Those funds are to be spent by December 31st, 2024. We did approve the purchase of seven radios in 2021 and the, why we did that is we wanted to allow every firefighter to have a radio. That was the, kind of how we made that decision, and then we also purchased a base radio for the fire department as well. So that was about $39,000 or specifically $38,713.78. And then this total is what in our, which would be ARPA funds would be $39,183. And so I know we have had a, an initial discussion and workshop on how we were gonna use these funds. We haven't, I want to bring this back in the near future because we really need to kind of put a timeline together and discuss further, just further ideas for this money. However, these radios were already on this kind of tentative plan, and so, again, bringing it to you a little early, I guess, for discussion purposes so that we don't run into that price increase. So I, with that, I'm kind of want to get your ideas on on the purchasing of these radios early, the use or using ARPA money to to purchase them and any other questions or concerns that you have at this time. Again, and I don't know if I mentioned, the radios are on our long-term plan because they're gonna reach 20 years, so they need to be replaced soon.
Chief, would you mind, just for maybe us or anyone else listening on the recording, just give a quick explanation what the radios are used for, how they're used, what are they used to communicate with dispatch? Can you give a quick?
Chief, so we are, the radios that we're talking about are the the radios just like this that we're gonna use to talk with dispatch, talk amongst each other on a fire scene, talk with other fire departments as they're incoming and stuff like that, so any of our fire ground operations, all our communication is done with these radios. The imperative part, where we purchased more radios last year, we wanted to get, so everybody had a radio. It's important, on a fire ground, somebody goes in, whatever the case may be, gets separated or whatever from their crew, they all then are carrying a radio, they can communicate. So we got those, we now we've got everybody that's got a radio now, but like I said, I've got 12 radios that are at 20 years old that are no longer to be able to be repaired. And I've had, you know, here and there, they've been starting to kind of die off where I don't have screens that don't work anymore and stuff like that, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I think for that point, having them, investing in them, we can't risk not having them work either, we can't risk a failure, and if they can't be fixed, in my opinion, but.
Saving the money now.
Right, so Maggie, and we're 100% sure this will be covered with the American Rescue Plan Act monies, or are we not?
Yeah, I I think when we looked at it before, the communications and or devices to support fire departments and police with their communications was covered, so.
For some reason it wasn't, we will be able to cover the $39,000.
If for some reason it wasn't, we would, either you look at splitting it between the fire capital and our general capital.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase of 12 radios for $38,730, is that right? No, no, I'm sorry. 12 radios for $39,183, utilizing the American Rescue Act money.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. Let's hurry up and get them on order then. Perfect, thanks, Andy. All right, Maggie, we'll move on to 71 Park Pavilion Project.
All right, Mayor Dodge and Council, the park commission has been asking, oh, I'm sorry. So the park commission, as you know, has been working on the concept for the park pavilion and bathrooms at Old Schoolhouse Park. So this is a project that's kind of been in the works for about 10 years. It did go out for bid in 2018, it was eventually rejected because it came in over budget of what the park commission was willing to spend at that time. So the park commission did focus on other projects in the meantime and as they were able to save up more funds in their capital fund, and the most recent discussion started up again in 2021 with the goal of potentially being a project in 2022 that they would pay for with cash out of their capital fund. So at the February 8th park commission meeting, the park commission and city council did meet to discuss the project together. There was a lot of discussion back and forth, I think there was, it was mostly positive, but there were some concerns about the overall costs and some design features related to the building. So staff was asked to look into those concerns with the architect a little bit more, also looking to see if the number of bathrooms was sufficient for the future uses that would potentially surround the pavilion in the future. And so staff did, one, confirm that the bathroom number was sufficient with the state of Minnesota, so they did sign off on that. And then, at the end of the meeting, city council and the park commission did direct staff, again, to work with the architect to see if there was a feasible way to reduce the project cost while still meeting the the main goals of the pavilion function. So sta, we did meet with the architect, in in your packet is the new concept plan, and we did invite city council, and we did this with the park commission too, to, we did a visual in the gym that kind of showed the size and just showed a visual of 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 what, how things would be laid out. So it is, it still includes the three bathrooms, it removes the concession kitchen area, however, it does provide now a wraparound on three sides of the bathrooms with actually more tables and space for people to sit. There are now two counter spaces instead of one, and these counter spaces on the north and south do, will include plug-ins, so if people are gathering, they can put in, can have a gathering of with crock pots and food and in that space. The water fountains that are currently on the back side, we are actually, the park commission, their suggestion was to push that the bathrooms back a couple feet to provide additional space between the bathrooms and the tables or the the meeting space in the front of the building. But we were thinking that we would move the water fountains next to the counters, and so there would be a water fountain on each side where where people kind of on the north and south side, where people gather. So with these changes, the architect has projected that this project would bid out at around $275,000 and $300,000 instead of the previous pavilion design that was projected to be about $420,000 and $450,000, so it does reduce it about 150 to 175, potentially. So this is a pretty significant reduction in cost, and it does meet all the the goals of the park commission, what we, what they are envision this pavilion will be used for. Again, the project will be paid for using capital funds and that usually, or that's sitting at about a little over $500,000 right now. And I think the significant savings is important because, again, we have future, a future, a vision for some, another additional plans in the future there, and that would allow us to maybe do those even sooner if we are able to reduce costs with this project. So the park commission did review the concept plan and they did the visual exercise as well, and they felt, overall, the park commission felt the new concept met the the desires of that space and was in favor of moving forward the bidding process. There was a little, I think, disappointment that the kitchen concession area was removed, but staff did explain that we do have a concession area already to the nor, to the west, and maybe building this structure will provide kind of a connection now between both spaces. So at this time where we're at is, the park commission is recommending moving forward with the architect drafting the documents needed to bid out the project. This, the construction documents and then the bidding process is included in the fee and it is $20,000. For clarification, I just want to let you know that the cost does not include stubbing in the water and sewer line, so we are working with the engineer to re, and public works to do that in-house to reduce cost. And then it also does not include currently taking down the public work shed, which we are in the process of exploring the, what that all entails as well. So at this time, the park commission is recommending moving forward with the architect in creating those documents to be, to get put out for bid in the amount of 20,000. And so I'm available for any additional comments, I know many of you were able to see that, do that visual exercise and kind of that's where we're at.
So is this designed that maybe in the future, two, five, 10 years from now, we could add on a kitchenette or a, is it designed that?
Yeah, so that is something that the park commission did discuss, and that's one of the reasons why we kind of moved the water fountains is there would be the ability to expand off of the back, that mechanical room is on the back right now, and if there was a kitchen added, it would need likely mechanical, like a sink, water and sewer, and so the discussion was yes, if any future phase would actually, would be off of the backside, and there's enough space to do that.
What's the roof, what's the roof material that's being proposed?
It is a, it's a rubber membrane surface, so it is slanted at a degree so that the water runs off, but it's a low maintenance rubber membrane that is durable and does not require ongoing lo, long-term maintenance, essentially. So that was one of the important features is that we wanted something that was low maintenance, something that we would not have to replace very often.
So if we move forward with drawings, go out for bid, at what point? So is it, we see the draw, the specs first?
Yeah.
And know what the materials are gonna be, what the bricks, what the walls are gonna look like, what the posts, what the membrane, how that compares to shingles, you know, 30-year-old, you know, 30-year shingles and.
Yeah.
Then we get, and then we go out for bid, is that?
Yeah, so essentially this would be putting, finalizing the documents, kind of similar to the street project, so it put together the scope and specs of the project, what the materials will be.
We'll be able to go through it before we go out for bid and make change, I mean, it's opportunity for changes, and or?
Yeah, so the, so any like big things I would want to probably, we would probably want to talk about tonight, but materials and stuff, I will be bringing it back to you with more of ideas before.
So what's the, one of my thought, it's because I can't visualize, I don't see measurements, with that slanted roof, what what's the height gonna be in the back versus the height in the front? And how will that look, will that look, you know, visually, I just don't know.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point, and these, I can clarify with the architect too, while he, because I think this is gonna take a little bit of time to put together, I can see if we can get some, some additional documents in front of you.
Or maybe just some of that information. Or maybe just some of that information. I'm just concerned with, I don't want to get too far down the path and also we can't make changes, this is the first, I've seen this.
Yeah.
We can't
Right.
Do anything because we've done it.
Yeah, and
I assume they're trying to stay the cheapest materials and, you know, some of that stuff, keeping that in mind.
Right.
But maybe if it was five hundred bucks, maybe a, a, a regular roof with shingles would look better and look, I, I just don't know.
Yeah, and I know
Doesn't look good.
Right. One of the, I think right now, the architect went with this designs mostly because the cost of shingles is, I guess, higher than what this product would be. And so one thing that I can ask him about, which we've done with other projects, is bidding alternates and kind of seeing which one comes in.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not an architect, but a peaked roof might not allow for expansion on the back end. So
And that might not
And I, and I've seen pavilions where this, the roof is slightly slanted just for runoff. My only concern is what happens to the water on the backside? Because if it's splashing into mud, you're going to have
Yeah, and I think the idea that
Yeah, like, yeah, like a, like how is it catching the water that flows off the side that's back down? And then my only other concern is, are the bathrooms going to be open twenty-four hours? Or will they only be accessible when, during the day? Is there, are we going to be, has that conversation had, I'm just
Yeah, I think some of the discussions that we've had is having doing a lock system or exploring a lock system that we would be automatically be able to time and lock. And then as far as the backside, I, I know that it'll, I know we'll be working with Bolton and Mink on like our I think the architect has Dave's information as far as making sure our stormwater drainage and everything is going to be where it needs to be. I know one thing Kyle wants to do is to have some concrete sidewalk along the backside so that it doesn't get muddy. But one thing we have to think about too is, yeah, what is the landscaping going to look like and are we going to have features that address kind of some of that, those concerns? It'll get, we'll have to clean up a lot of that area to make sure it's not
I mean, I really like the cost. I think that is very feasible for what, for the, for the, yeah, for the money that we actually have in our park fund. And I'm excited to see that, that we're finally looking at using that money for what it was intended for and that we've been saving for. So I like that and I like how many tables there are. I, I'm fine with just the space for, and not having a concession since we have one and it hardly does get used. But I think that if we have this, then maybe somebody would be using both areas and then the concession would be more feasible and then you just have to walk up for bathrooms and more space for sitting and it'd be, I'm excited about it.
Yeah, and I can definitely, I, I know when, when we were talking to the architect, like even this brick design is not final. Like, we want to use brick, but we, the design stuff still needs to come back for discussion and kind of what, what that brick will look like, what will the beams look like and all the materials, like the final material. So there is discussion that will still happen before it goes out for bid.
I agree with Nikki, I think you guys did a great job of bringing the price down into a manageable amount. I still do, and I think Nikki even bringing that up about the expansion now, I'd almost be as concerned with this. If that back slope hits that height of whatever, nine feet, wherever it is, and then we expand another eight, then what? We can't go at an angle anymore because now it's only going to be four feet high. You know, so I think we should look at that, at least make sure we have options to expand it somehow. If that's our, if that's the vision.
Right.
To expand it, maybe we just put it up a little higher, could give it a little extra room for, you know, six more feet in the future, that we still meet that. But let's consider that, I think. I would like to get a little more numbers wrapped around what it might be for the stubbing stuff in. What it might be for the, you know, picnic tables and landscaping, to kind of get an idea of the entire project, what the entire thing would be. But if you think we want to move forward now with getting plans drawn without knowing some of that, with the thought of
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable just with internal discussions with Kyle. And kind of where we think some of those numbers will come in it.
Though I think we need to have that information again.
Right, and I think we can, we can get that hopefully, we've been working on it.
When they do that, will they do the whole site? Will they do that like the, kind of the whole site we're thinking of and kind of put the landscaping in and the backpack? You know, will they, where, where do we get, where does that come into? From a planning commission and approval for John to approve, you know?
Yeah, John, it is something that will, like the whole site plan will have to come back to the Park Commission.
So we'll have the entire thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, no, I think this is great, I think you guys did a great job. Any other comments?
Yeah, it'll be important exactly to know where it's at, especially with the other proposal from the church with the shared parking.
Yeah, this is, this is supposed to go kind of north to south where the current public work shed is. So that shed is going to
Shared parking is if, if they were looking at one point five acres of the three point six three acres of the whole parcel that is the city's. Like the, the property line is just kind of like divided on the original, or the proposal from the church. There's no definite, like, where, where does it stop? It just says shared parking, but then the new church and part of the link is on property of the shared parking. It's just a small detail, but I mean
Yeah, yeah, no, it's supposed, the pavilion's supposed to go right here.
Yeah.
But again, with this shared parking, that, that was their very preliminary concept. And I think the latest discussion is that that would get scaled back quite a bit. Because they're trying to fit more on
The other end.
The other end. But again, that's something that we need to, need to consider is, you know,
Right.
How much would we be willing to? How, how would that impact that space and the vision for that, I guess, space, so?
But I think preliminary budget numbers were, are fantastic. I mean, I think we talked about our, our high number being to three hundred thousand and we're there and
Right.
I'd like to, I'd like to keep it moving forward.
Yeah, and I, and I agree and typically, I like to see more information before we invest this. But if the park boards align with it and, and I'll kind of take their lead on it and if you feel we're comfortable with it, I'd be okay with this, just to keep that moving, you know, with this twenty thousand investment.
Yeah, and so it's part of the scope of work, I just wanted to point out too that that he's, we're going to have meetings to go over to review his concepts and, and make adjustments, like minor adjustments as we go through it. So, so that, that'll, because we don't want to just throw together something that doesn't have input, so
What's, what the toilets are, what the, you know, is the shelf stainless steel? There's a deal. Do we want to put things in the floor right away to hold the picnic tables in so they're not being moved or do we want people moving them and then they're all over? We, you know, some of those decisions, but
Yeah.
Okay, no, I'd be, I, I'm okay with that, taking the lead if the park boards recommend it, I'll, I'll go with their recommendation then. All right, any other questions need answered from Maggie? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the construction documents for bidding being prepared from Olson Hobby Architects for the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? And like I said Maggie, anything you can get in the meantime for some, well, I think would be helpful for everyone as we, as we continue to move forward.
Sure.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, City Council reports, Councilmember Melander, anything to report on?
I have to report.
Councilmember McNeely.
Nope.
Councilmember Hal.
Nope.
I have none myself, I haven't had no meetings. I do want a just quick comment. I apologize for missing the meeting two weeks ago. I went into work Monday morning, we take temperatures, I had a temperature spike, so I had to go home and quarantine. So I just want to publicly thank Rod Metzl for all the work, all the fifty years he's done for our community, for our residents. And, and again, not only Rod, Lois is right in there with that too. She's, she's been there for every minute of it with him, so I just want to make sure publicly thank them both for fifty years of service. We're, we're blessed to have them. Anything else? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Melander, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. We are adjourned. All right, with that, then we will move right into the we'll open the City Council workshop meeting at seven thirty, Monday, March fourteenth. And we'll just jump right in then Maggie.
Yeah, we'll just jump right in. So Mayor Dodge and Council, I'm bringing this to this meeting. We had originally, originally planned for February, but it just, the timing didn't work out. I think we were missing a couple council members and I just wanted to try to get as many people in a session as possible. So the goal of this work session is to have a discussion, a further discussion on the goals that we set in the meeting in two thousand twenty-one for the year two thousand twenty-two. So the following goals and priorities were identified at that meeting. Consistent with other years, keeping the tax rate at or below the current rate, increasing transparency and civic engagement, updating the, continuing to update capital plans to focus on our long-term expansion and maintenance of current buildings and infrastructure and continuing to be proactive in our long-term planning and vision. So the next documents, I, they're a bit descriptive, but I just wanted to provide you with some information on, on these goals and priorities. Identify strategies, provide our previous accomplishments in those areas and then twenty twenty benchmarks that I think would be good to focus on. And then ask for any additional discussion and comments on each of those items. So financially, as you know, we've been maintaining the city's financial health by utilizing our long-term financial plans. We actually, it, it's been great that we've been able to get CIP in every department now, every area. And then with that, put together timelines and priorities and then put them into a comprehensive financial plan. And with that, we've been really able to tackle a lot of projects within the last few years. And with that, able to keep our tax rate at an either even or lower level while doing those projects. We've been able to kind of look at our financial situations such as when we should levy debt and when we shouldn't, other outside resources that are available to us and other, like when we should pay with cash and when we shouldn't. We've been also saving up each year in, for our capital funds for those future projects as well to keep our levy. Again, to make sure that in the future, we aren't, we don't have any high-cost items that just occur all of a sudden. So we've maintained our healthy budget. One thing we, one thing we do every, every year is we, again, update our capital plan, our long-term financial plan. And then we seek grants, opportunities where we can. And then the City Council is provided quarterly financial reports as well. So that kind of brings that information on a regular basis for the City Council to review. So again, I think those are things that I, I suggest keep doing. I think we're we're already starting to plan our, and move forward with our two thousand twenty-two capital projects. We're starting to plan too for future projects. We have a larger street project coming up in two thousand twenty-three. And then we do have some with the audit, I think there were some financial policies that they suggest that we update. And then I think we're going to do our utility rate study again this year. I did, I don't have to go through our historical stuff, but again, we've been doing a lot of projects, starting to tackle, really work on our maintenance plans. I just highlighted a lot of the projects we've done over the last four years. And so with that, I'm just asking for any, any ideas within that area that you think we could improve on or focus on or expand on, I guess?
So for me, I think this area, I think we shine, I mean, this is a great, I think we've made strides over the years on these with all the tools we have in place. So let's, I think we just keep going on those and keep looking at them periodically and where do we need to adjust them? Like the rate studies, it's time to relook at that and reassess it. And the one other thing where I'd maybe like to start seeing here in the future, if it's not two thousand twenty-two into two thousand twenty-three, is maybe start getting a plan together where some of that might start coming back in, where, where you'll start doing it versus contracting something.
Oh, right, right.
What we can do for some of that stuff, just to bring it back in-house. So maybe start getting a plan together for that where we could start, you know, phase, phase some stuff back in. Some of those reports, maybe you can, you could do yourself.
Yep.
Otherwise, I think it's great, I think we have all the tools in place, I think that's our
Yeah, we've invested, we've invested a good amount of money in different studies to make sure that we're on track. Especially with like our road projects and
And I think they paid off.
Yeah, no, they definitely paid off because it allowed us to really look at it. And that's one reason why our street project this year, we most likely will be able to pay cash for. Because we did know that it was coming. And I feel that we really do a good job of maintaining and keeping up and not waiting for it to be really bad and then costing a lot of money to fix, so.
And even the street plans, you know, Bolton and Mink put together for us, they're helping, all those tools are so useful for us. We'll just keep those on and keep updating those as needed and, and keep those up to date.
Yeah, and I would say making sure each department's looking at their CIP and making adjustments and not just saying, okay, I haven't touched it in five years. You know, because we know that it was, you know, I looked out five years, but it always can change with where we're at. Just making sure that each department, you know, at least every other year is looking at it, making sure that it's still up to date or I'm assuming they probably do it every year.
We're doing it every year, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, we're currently in the process of relooking at it all and updating it, so. Very useful tool. Anything else? All right, so services, let's just focus on our, you know, just providing high-quality services. Exploring additional processes that can allow us to be more efficient and effective. Continuing supporting, using our partnerships when we can with the school district, other communities, businesses, county, state. Just so that we're not duplicating where someone else could be doing something or we could be doing something and working together. And then monitor, monitoring community trends. You know, are we, what's changing in our community and what do we need to think of for the, for future needs? And then review staffing needs on an ongoing basis to make sure we have the adequate staff to support those needs. So some of the things we're doing is we're continuing to review technology that can help streamline and make things more efficient. We continue to reach out and connect with our current partnerships. We review, we're currently going to start reviewing our current and future staffing needs. It's something that's really important for this year. And then continuing to monitor trends, so yeah, so I think, again, we've, we've made changes in our IT. That's, that's something we, that the City Council really focused on the last couple of years. We essentially established a citywide network, campus network, made it more secure. It's backed up now securely, it's more efficient. That was just kind of getting everything not so patchy, putting it all together. And then the next phase is kind of the security element of all of our buildings. We upgraded our, kind of our streaming services, that's, that's been huge, I think, for some residents who like to stream in or watch the videos. We're able to get our videos up a lot quicker, pretty much right after the meeting. And then again, just, I don't have to go through everything, but just other partnerships that we've been working with over the last year, just to, and I think one thing too is just being proactive. And I think one thing, too, is just being proactive and making sure that our infrastructure is maintained, so that we're preventing any, any lapse in coverage, you know, to our businesses and residents, 'cause I think that's, that's the best approach. So, um, that's, that's all I really have in that section, so if anybody has any...
I agree, I think, I think the security aspect of stuff is a huge, we'll be good to keep that rolling. And I do, would really like, really staffing, the future staffing, really get an idea when we, I, I feel we're already there, that we need more staff, but we, we gotta get it together, and what's driving, you know, how, how much time is being spent? You know, as we add things, and take the pavilion, for instance, if we add that, how much more, what more is that adding to our public works group? Now, I assume they won't clean bathrooms, we'll hire that done with our cleaner, perhaps, maybe not, maybe that's what I would prefer, but it, but what more do they have to do? They have to go out there every day, empty garbage now, do they have to rearrange tables, do they have to pressure wash the, the cement once a week? Do they have to clean, you know, how much more time are they spending out? We added a basketball court, we, you know, as we add these things, it's more and more strain on them. We gotta get a good handle on, you know, how much work they're doing for just the routine stuff in an eight-hour day, and if it's six hours of work, that's too much, because they're not getting other things. So, I, I think we've really gotta look at the staffing. I, I, I have a feeling we're there already, my gut tells me that, but I need to see some data for that. And, and not just public works, I mean, city hall also. I think we're there, too, to be honest, but, and I'd like, you know, with that, I wanna start looking at other, at a planner. At what point does a plant, does it make sense to hire a planner versus contractor? Where's that, where's that cut, cut-even point on that? Is it so many homes, is it, development picks up so much? You know, I know we're not spending eighty thousand dollars a year on, on contract now, but somewhere, there's gonna be that cross point, so I wanna start getting some of that information, too.
Anything else? Alright, next one, so just to let you know, I have four of them, just so you are aware of this, how long this goes, so. So, communication and engagement, so goals to be transparent, to continue to build upon the city's current communication methods of social media, website, newsletter, newspaper, streamed meetings and so forth, to promote the city and city departments and commissions at community events, and to explore the use of more open houses, community media, meeting events and surveys, to get more input from the community. I think, unfortunately, the last couple of years has kind of reduced the ability to, to use some of those methods, but... So, strategy is that we'll continue to post information of events, meetings, and important information on the website, social media, newsletter. We put out at least six to seven newsletters each year, or each, yeah, each year, and I think that's a really good way to connect with people. I think social media's been really good. I think the web, by us recreating our website, I think it's gotten a lot more, it's a lot more... User-friendly, that's the word, I'm like, and we've been able to then put more information on there, and I think it's really allowed people to search for their own information that they want to search for. And we're always getting feedback all the time, like Nikki called me the, the other day, and she's like, we need to have this information there. And I'm like, it's good when people provide me feedback, because I don't always connect all these things, 'cause I'm not u- using the website for all those, the same way residents are.
Yeah, I was looking for information, and it wasn't easily found, so we just had a conversation, and...
Yeah, I was able to get it up.
You don't know until you're in there and trying to find something, when you're like, oh, that, that's how I would've gotten to there, like, but that's not where it was. Which was, it was not a negative at all.
Yeah, no, no, I, it just, it's, it's really helpful to get that feedback, so that we, you know, we can get that stuff up there and people can find it, 'cause I'm sure other people have the same questions. So again, we did update our website last year, a, again, for the second time since I've been here, and I think it's improved significantly. Again, we've been able to communicate now with residents on a live stream, through a live stream, and get our, get everything up on our website, almost instantaneously afterwards. And I just, I think there's some improvements that can, can still happen, we can still work on this, but I think there's been a lot of improvement within the last few years.
Do you have a comment?
Just one comment on the newsletter. I know it's hard to be ahead of time with the newsletter, but a couple times in the last six months, a year, I noticed, the newsletter came out and was over with, in what you advertised in the newsletter. Couple different times, I've noticed things that, I know it's hard to try to get them out a month in advance, maybe, you know, so people have more time to adapt. 'Cause there is a bunch of older generation that don't use the...
Right, right, and that's why, that's why the newsletter is very important still.
I'm not very good on the computer.
We'll take a look at that, yeah, that's, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd still like to have a meet the council in the park event.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. I think, again, we can explore some of those options this year. I think it was kinda hard, just a little bit with COVID. But I think it makes sense to start exploring those other options again, like, where residents are invited to come in and, or meet council somewhere, or commissions.
Yeah, that's a really good idea, and it's going to be spring and summer, and that's the time we're gonna do, I, I really don't wanna do in the winter.
No.
And I agree, I think the website is a huge improvement. For me, there's a, I think more than one, but like the city meetings tab, you click on it, takes you to nothing. So some of those, I'm not su, you know, maybe we can...
Oh, yeah, no, that's good to, good to know.
Instructions on what, what is there, and oh, go visit, here's the link to go view them or something, you know.
I'll have to look at what...
The other thing I would really like to do, and I know we've talked about this, let's, can we get some pictures from the city mayor to add in there?
Yeah.
Even if it's from events, Mayor Rising Computer, or our new water tower, or I know we talked one time about get some, a drone, and maybe get some pictures of some, you know, the, the new water tower up high, and maybe Bolton and Menke could help with that, or...
Yeah, no, and I apologize, I think I started working on that project.
Some of the main things in town, I think it'd be good to have those scroll through, so it can put up, I mean, it, it makes it a little more...
Yeah, no, that's a good point, I, I...
And one thing I'd like to try to get from residents, if it's possible, I'd like to know their, what's their main avenue for information? Is it the newsletter, is it Twitter, is it Facebook, or is it the website? And how do they like to be communicating? Is there any way to get that, can it be a survey monkey and put it in the newsletter? But then, some people don't have computers, so they might not do it, so it'd be nice to try to get some of that information, or even as people come in, ask. But maybe that's only, only...
Yeah.
Yep, it's all age-dependent, I think.
But like, Mind Dot had a thing where you could fill out a survey, you could do it online, so like, couple different options.
Drop it right off, too.
We could do, we could just do an EDDM, too. It's, it's a much cheaper way, and every household and mayor would get it for probably a quarter of the price of adding it to the water bill.
If it's worthwhile, and maybe it's not worthwhile.
If it's worthwhile, absolutely.
But, and, and the other thing I'd like to do is, it seems if we put something on one, and not necessarily the newsletter, 'cause that's a, a different, but with Twitter, Facebook, and the city website, if, if something's on one, I'd like it to be on the other two also, and, and blast out on everything, 'cause some people...
Yeah.
The misprints on the water bill, I didn't go to the website, I didn't see it anywhere else on Facebook or, or Twitter, but I don't go to the website to look at it.
No, that, that's fair.
I think if it's on one, it should be on three.
Okay.
In my opinion. Otherwise, it's great, I, great, and, and pictures of, of our community, and then, you know, the new fire station scrolls through there, and the new water tower, and... Yeah, those are my comments.
Alright, last...
Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry.
Is that it? Oh, yeah, this is the other one. What do you think about something, I, I hear comments, our water is super expensive, it's gold, it's hot, more expensive, go all that, you know? Do you think there'd be any interest if we opened up the wastewater treatment plant or the water filtration plant, and we gave tours to residents periodically, just to let them come through and kinda get an idea of what's happening in here even? Do you think there's any, do you think anyone would wanna do that?
You'll get a few.
I think you'd get some.
Mayor Dodge, council, so currently, in Delano, they have offered, they're offering Citizens Academy with different locations that you can go one of them. There's the wastewater treatment open to residents, we're interested in it. All the different plants you can go to, you can go to city hall, sit down and kinda learn a little bit about how financing is done, so... And it's a six-week program, and they are offering a class, it's a two-hour class, once a week, I believe, for six weeks. So, just because I know through some of the committees there, residents have been kinda wanting to know, you know, what's going on with the...
I think it helps them understand why, but again, if it's eight people out of twenty-four hundred, is it, but, I mean, that's, we can't do it, at least we've offered it. And if you choose not to do it, that's, would you be able to find out from Delano how many people do, how many people do, you know, come in and do it? I don't know if I would get into something that in-depth, where it'd be a coll, you know, a six-week, but open it up and let people just kinda get an idea of what happens in there even.
I mean, I didn't know all that was involved until I actually joined council, and understanding, you know, why you can't really compare water rates to other cities, because everybody's infrastructure is slightly different, and their plant's different, and operates different. So, you can't look at Watertown and be like, well, their rates are this, and ours is this, you, you're not really comparing apples to apples. But how, you can't really explain that water's water to a resident, so... It, it is, it's good to educate people on why, you know, and that's why we're doing rate studies, and that's why we're doing it to make sure, and, you know, people don't understand that. It, it's a, you, we can't tax, property tax for water, like, it has to be...
It's like a business.
It's a business, you know, we have to, it has to pay for itself.
I don't know. Yeah.
Well, that's a...
Word out there before to people, if you're gonna change something, or given the reason why you're gonna change it, because it, this is gonna make it more efficient, or, you know, something like that, when you do a major change, you know, people, if you can explain that before.
Well, and now with YouTube and, and this being live, we can have some of those conversations, and then stream it, so that anybody can watch it at any time, and then if people call and have questions, say, oh, well, we did a Citizens Academy on, on that, here's the YouTube link.
I just think also, people... They can do something outside of council, I think they might be interested, 'cause I, I've seen a lot of times where people talk about, oh, this isn't right, let's go up to the meeting, we gotta go to the meeting, we gotta, and then no one shows up, 'cause I don't know if they don't wa, I, I feel they don't wanna come in, so that might make it less intimidating, too, that they can have some conversation.
Yeah.
Why don't you talk to Kyle about it, and, and Brian tomorrow in your meeting?
Yeah.
See if they think it's...
You could even do, well, you could even do a video.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, just explain.
Maybe it's not even, maybe we decide we don't, but...
I like the tour idea, and if, if nobody does it, then we can do, we're gonna do a rate study anyway, right, a new one?
That's the plan.
So then, we have a, then we can do the video of the tour and explain things along with the rate study, and then go, well, this is kinda why.
Dave, do you guys do videos?
Yes.
Nice.
But I like the tour idea.
You guys don't, too?
I was gonna say, do you think, you asked me something, I'd say, nope.
I'll find a way.
We have a, we have a graphics...
That would be kinda fun, you have a tour, you can open it up, people can come, so let's say you have a couple people, but then you video it, doing the tour, so then people who weren't able to make it then have access to it, and then that just explains, you know, you know, we have a Class A wastewater treatment plant. I mean, that is, that's a lot bigger than a lot of other big cities in Carver County.
Now, why don't you guys discuss it tomorrow, and see what, see what the, their thoughts are?
One thing I also wanted to add, that I just started adding this year, is I'm doing council and commission summaries for each meeting. I know people don't like to sift through council packets, and so I just do a very little summary on each item, and that's also on the same page as the packets, so there's a link to those, and it's just another way to get information to people.
Right.
Um, I like, I think I've mentioned it, other cities just do a quick overview of highlights, like in a, like a PowerPoint, and they just post it on Facebook. So I look at a lot of cities there, just 'cause I'm curious, just talks about, you know, this, and then if you want further information, you can click actually to the packet, or no, to go to the site to get more information, but it just says, you know, we talked about this, so Victoria does it, Mocona does it.
Yeah, and even doing like that and linking it, either, and just saying packets and summaries are available on the website, I think that'd be a good idea, just to let people know.
Those are exactly, I think, as, as more and more things you guys start doing, staff, you gotta change.
Right.
And should that be an intern, or should that be a, an entry-level person doing, you know, as we look at those things? You know, we can't always keep dumping everything out before people, so let's, let's really look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
Not to go back again, but I think that ma, that even makes it...
Yeah, it just adds more that we could do that would be beneficial.
Yep, all these things we can do for the community.
Yep. Alright, so the last thing that I have is public safety initiatives, so to continue and expand on public safety, community outreach, specifically with the police and fire departments, and when possible, specifically with new projects, explore adding new pedestrian and bike-friendly routes, and then continue to be proactive in infrastructure maintenance, including sidewalks, streets, and park equipment. So, the city mayor strategy will be continued to promote and expand on public safety, community outreach with police and fire. This includes in-person interaction and education opportunities, so we do have, our fire department does have an education component to it, which is good. I wanna work with the police department a little bit more on it, on kinda them getting out into the community, and... They, they come to quite a few city events, but just kind of incorporating them into it as well a little bit more. New projects, as new projects are considered, just making sure that we're doing a comprehensive look at the entire project. Again, accessibility to public properties, and what methods, so sidewalks, you know, are, are they accessible, you know, especially our parks, are they bike-friendly? Stuff like that. And then, when we're doing maintenance of our infrastructure, one big discussion we've been having is making sure our sidewalks are where they should be, just making sure they're safe, our streets are, are maintained properly, and then our park equipment. So, again, what we've been doing is, our park equipment is inspected every year, so we make sure that's safe, any parts that aren't, what, any parts that could be hazardous, is, they're replaced.
They're inspected every year professionally, but every month internally, right?
Yes, yes, so we, we do our regular rounds on park equipment, but then, yes, they are professionally inspected each year to make sure everything is, that they can see things that we don't usually, can't easily identify. And so, again, just continuing to do the public outreach opportunities, inviting police and fire to all of our city events, just taking a comprehensive look at all of our, whenever we do projects, making sure we're seeing, looking at everything. And then, one goal of ours has been, when we start doing more of our larger street projects, that we're going to look at our sidewalks and make sure everything is safe. Another thing is adding that pedestrian, one thing I'm continuing to work on is that pedestrian crosswalk on Highway twenty-five at the regional trail. And then, again, continuing to inspect our park equipment. And then I did just provide a little, kinda what we've been doing, and, you know, just adding the, we did add that second pedestrian crosswalk by the fire station. We did add one up by Casey's. And then again, just being proactive in our maintenance and, and just keeping an eye out for keeping residents safe and...
Those are all good, I really wanna push for that crosswalk there by the trail, I think that needs to happen there.
Yeah.
My only other comment, I put it in this one just because this is the one you talked about, the police department, the sheriff's department. Years back and it was really well-received by the community, I'd like to see if we could work with Carver County again at the drug take-back program and have it here.
Oh, yeah.
Our deputy can be here and they collect it. We used to do it with Chris and Jake. A lot of people came here, a lot of people appreciated having it here. And I know that's coming up in April, so we'd have to move quick, but.
Yeah, I'll look into that because I know.
I think it's April, I, I thought it was. But if we could do something and have our deputy be here and collect stuff, it's.
No, that would be great because I know even the cleanup day and other, those other opportunities, like residents love those, so.
I don't remember the number of pounds they collected in that, but.
Yeah, I will reach out to them tomorrow, yeah. Anything else on that topic? Yeah, so I, I just want to think, you know, council and, and staff and everybody that the city works with, I think this really shows a lot, a lot about what we've been doing and the progress we've made and kind of just showing that we've been very proactive and getting creative and.
I agree.
So, I appreciate that.
An awful job, so.
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, that goes with everyone, our contractors also, along with staff and along with, you know, public works, everyone, so great job, I think.
Thanks. So last, any, I just wanted to say, ask for any additional comments or considerations, but that's all I have otherwise.
That's all I had, I put all mine in there as we went through.
Okay.
And maybe if you want, reach out to Peggy, see if she has some thoughts.
Sure.
Additional, just for her not being here, it'd be worthwhile.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, we are adjourned.